Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Unfinished business and we're looking at the warnings for the town meeting. And they just got emailed out to everyone. I know they haven't had a long time to study them, but the first three are kind of just boilerplate things that we always have to do. The one thing that we're, we're not clear on right now is who our district clerk may be. Um, our moderator, I haven't heard that, um, yeah. I had his name around the tip of my tongue. He was a board member for a while out in Athens. Can somebody help me with his name?
That's Don Capacelli.
Thank you. Does anyone have someone in mind for a district clerk? We did have Allison Bigwood and she did not do it last year. And so now we're looking for somebody that would like to. You, I don't know why, but in the past, it's always felt it was a treasurer from the town. Is it? Can it be anybody? Priscilla's shaking her head like that might be right.
It's the district, it's the district treasurer. That's the treasurer. That doesn't, it's separate from our board treasurers.
From the clerk.
Or clerks or any of that. And Kathleen has been the one that's always been doing it lately. And she's done a great job. So I would.
Kathleen Neathawke, right? Kathleen's last name is?
N-E-A-T-H-A-W-K.
Got it. So I'm not clearing. Do I need to have Article 1 approved with Don Capacelli put in there? Or just to elect a moderator?
It would be to elect a moderator.
Okay. So Article 1, 2, and? Yes?
My question is that at the top, you're, you're putting, you're saying these are by Australian ballot. But if we're doing a hybrid meeting in person and by Zoom, I don't, I would think that Articles 1, 2, and 3, and the ones that are normally voted at our regular meeting, wouldn't be by Australian ballot. Just the money amounts like it's been in the past.
I agree.
Go by Australian ballot.
So I do think that, and maybe I got hung up on the articles when we started at the top, but the way that is written, um, the only thing that we've ever voted on, on Australian ballot would be Article 4. So on Tuesday, March 1st, to act on the following would be to act on Article 4. And on, so we haven't set, or we talked about a date, but haven't set a date. We need a date for the Bellas Falls Union High School School District Meeting, which my understanding is February 23rd is the date that we're, we're looking to have that happen. So above the Article 1, 2, 3, and 5. Oh, I see what she's got.
Molly, when it was, when I read, um, the previous one that I'm looking at, it says, hereby warned, it said, are hereby warned to meet at the Bellas Falls Union High School Auditorium in the town of Westminster, Vermont on Wednesday. And it would be February 23, 2020 at, it says 7:00 PM. To act on Articles and you put in 1 through 3 and what? 5?
95.
Now unless we adjust them. And, and then adjourn to Tuesday, March, what is it? March 6th, whatever date it is, 2020, to vote by Australian ballot on Article 4. March 1st, no.
March, March.
March 1st is a Tuesday this year? March 1st, okay. 2020, to vote by Australian ballot on Article 4, on which date the polls will be open at places and during the time stated below. As she's got there.
So it looks like we need to change that top paragraph.
Right.
Okay.
Nicole must be changing it as we're talking.
I think she is, yes.
Nicole's here with me, so.
Yeah, it's because I see it changing.
Molly, Deb, Deb Wright has her hand up.
Go ahead, Deb.
My question is, the informational meeting, is that intended to be Wednesday? And if it, and if it is intended to be Wednesday, the 23rd, which is what the 23rd is, shouldn't we also designate it as Wednesday? We should define the day and date as well. That's my question.
Yeah, that's what I just read, Deb.
It, it doesn't say Wednesday. It just says the 23rd. I'm saying it should state the day of the week as well.
Yeah, it does, the way I read it.
We're doing that right now. We're doing that right now. Good point.
Okay.
To meet at the Bellas Falls Union High School Auditorium in the town of Westminster, Vermont on Wednesday, September 23, 2020, at 7:00 PM to act on Articles 1 through, whatever they are, 3, and Articles 5. And then adjourn to Tuesday, March 3, 2020, to vote by Australian ballot on Article 4, on which date the polls will be open, at the places and dates.
So right now, we have this information about the public meeting and voting down at the bottom under further notice. I'm wondering if that should just be part of that first opening article? Or not article, but the first paragraph. It seems confusing to separate it.
And that's the way it was done before. And that's what I was reading from. Was the way it had been done before. It's not at the bottom. Well, you have the, also the bottom one.
Because right now, we need to fix our opening paragraph. Because we're saying that we're hereby. Yeah.
She's getting it fixed.
That first paragraph should not be there. It should start with the legal voters, just like it did in the previous warnings.
Thank you, Nicole.
I think the problem is the last sentence. Articles 1, 2, 3, and 5, and adjourn to Tuesday, March 1st. It, it just doesn't flow there.
You gotta have the meeting first, like I read it. They're hereby warned to meet at Bellas Falls Union High School Auditorium in the town of Westminster, Vermont on Wednesday, February 23, 2020, at 7:00 PM.
Okay, so hang on, hang on Priscilla. So we're saying the legal voters of the Union High School consisting of the, the, the Vermont are hereby warned to meet.
At the Bellas Falls Union High School Auditorium.
To meet at the?
In the town of Westminster, Vermont. On Wednesday. February 23. 2020 at 7:00 PM. 22, sorry, 22. At 7:00 PM, to act on Articles 1 through, whatever we decide on here, 1 through 3. And Articles 5. And then adjourn. 1, 2, 3, 5. And then adjourn to Tuesday. March 1, 2022. Vote by, you've got it there. Let's put in 2. By Australian ballot on Articles.
Article 4.
On Article 4.
And then get rid of that last sentence.
On which, and then it says, on which the date, the polls will be open at the places and during the time stated below. But you've got that in a separate pair of lines, so that's fine. Okay, the only other question I've got on that was, the one I'm reading from says Article 1 is to act on the reports of the officers. And that's usually in there. So do we want that?
I thought we usually did the officers at our first organizational meeting.
Now we act on the reports of the officers at the, at the.
Oh, the reports.
Meaning we're acting on the, on the high school report.
Yeah.
So we can put that.
Yes, that's usually Article 1.
Okay.
And then you just move them down one.
Article 1 is, say it again.
To act on the reports of the officers.
Yeah, I can spell. You can all see that. That's wrong. I know. I can't even spell right now. All right.
I see. I C E R S.
All right.
And then you have Article, and then you gotta put Article 2 in there. You gotta adjust your Articles. And renumber Article 3, Article 4. Which changes it at the top, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 at the moment. You're gonna, yeah, put 4 and then 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. So we change it on you.
Fine, as long as we can agree upon this, then we can go somewhere else.
Have we found out the equalized spending yet? Because that's important.
John, do you have that?
I can give you that number at some point. If we can agree on the total budget number.
That budget number there, that $7,230,000 is different than the number that we had Friday night. Is that, how, why, what adjusted that? Unless it was adjusted towards the end of the meeting and I didn't get it written down, but.
Yeah, that's the number that I had, Priscilla.
Is it? Okay, was that adjusted toward the end of our meeting, Friday night? Is that what happened? Because on the paper, it was $7,165,000. But it might've been adjusted after and I just didn't get it written down.
Well, I tried to say it was $7,230,000 and Andy corrected me and told me it was $7,230,000.
Right. Thank you, Molly. You're correct. I'm wrong.
That's the adjusted number, but then what also needs to happen, and Glenn, I'm gonna fumble through this, and if you can save me, is depending on what you guys choose to do with your fund balance, you might be reducing that number. And that, that'll give you your, your education spending as well.
Okay, David Clark has a hand up.
Thank you, Molly. Neither Athens nor Grafton operate a school district. Therefore, the language needs to be voters in the towns of Athens, Grafton, Rockingham, Westminster.
So regarding the, um.
So.
Hold on, let's fix what.
Hey, you're saying, David, you're saying consisting of the school districts of Rockingham and Westminster, and the voters of Athens and Grafton? I'm sorry, I missed.
Andy, it's supposed to be the voters of the towns of Athens, Grafton, Rockingham, Westminster.
Got you.
David, did you just say consisting of the towns of Athens, the first line? Consisting of the towns of? Because they're the, they're the Union High School District. Would that work? Or do you need legal voters again? But you said legal voters of Union School District.
A voter, there is no such thing as a legal voter of the Athens School District. There is no such thing as a legal voter of the Grafton School District. Because those districts do not exist. Therefore, it is the legal voters in the towns of Athens, Grafton, Rockingham, and Westminster.
Because we've already said, David, we've already said the legal voters of Union High School District, number 20 says. So we say consisting of the, what do you want?
Be consistent of the towns of Athens, Grafton, Rockingham, and Westminster, but not the school districts. Because two of those school districts you're citing do not exist.
But we, I, I guess we took out the school district piece, David, so that's what, so we, yeah. So we have the legal voters of the Union High School District consisting of the towns, Athens, Grafton, Rockingham, and Westminster. Are you saying it should say the legal voters of the towns of Athens, Grafton, Rockingham, and Westminster? Which comprise the Union Elementary or the Union High School?
Just as long as you drop the reference to Athens and Grafton School Districts, I think you're gonna be okay, Andy.
Okay, we did that. So I, I guess, um, as we are looking at that, for Article number 5, I guess the question is, there is a fund balance of 800. Where did I lose that?
892,374 is what you gave us Friday night.
892,374, yes. Okay, just wanted to make sure I had the right number.
Andy, is that fund balance confirmed? Like, is that a solid number now? Because I thought the audit wasn't finished.
I would, I would venture to say that it is pretty close to, um, you know, um, like, I, I think you're, you're probably within $10,000. I, I don't think that, um, I just talked with Miranda, um, just before this meeting, just to verify. Um, and she was comfortable with that number. So, um, you know, she recommended, I think, uh, you know, never, never depleting the whole thing. Um, because you, you know, don't, don't take the whole 108, 892,000 and give it, you know, keep some of it in reserve a little bit, was what she was recommending, but, um.
So what happens if, because you know, we have to put very specific numbers in the warning. So what happens if we're $10,000 off? Does that make a difference? It seems like it would.
Yeah, you would be deficit spending next year. Molly, David has his hand up.
Go ahead, David.
Your fund balance, if it is not otherwise designated, is going to reduce taxation. If you want to reserve fund balance for a specific purpose, then you need to identify what that purpose is and what the amount is. And you are in a situation where you could, uh, vote it off the floor, if that's what you wanted to do, or you could vote it by Australian ballot. I think you're probably better off voting it off the floor because in the absence of an explanation, it will be difficult for most voters to understand whether they want to vote yes or no. And we do know from experience that people who are uncertain have a greater tendency to vote no.
So we had a suggestion made that we were going to take a portion of that to reduce um, the cost to the taxpayers. And then a balance of that money and put it in a reserve fund for some of these maintenance items that feel like they're a long ways away because they're a lot of money. Um, whether it's the auditorium or the driveway or whatever, you know, whatever is next on the punch list of things that we've been trying to get done. Um, Mr. Brody, do you have some insight on that for us?
You're muted, John.
I would, I would think that we should roll over some of it. And then we put the rest in a reserve fund so that once we've, um, used or depleted our ESER funding on whatever can be done, then we would have a healthy balance to then continue to further work at the projects we need done without, um, further asking of the taxpayer, so.
Do you have a recommendation or do you want somebody else to make that?
Well, what I had, what I'd said to, um, earlier was, I recommend rolling over, say, 100,000 and putting 792 in a reserve fund. Uh, with our budget being down in a, a better place this year, that'll give a further tax break. But again, I, I don't know what the equalized pupil amount would be. So I'd, I'd like us to also think about that. If Glenn has figures that he can give us to, to make sure we're below that, so. That, that would be my recommendation, but.
Okay, is, um, Glenn, are you able to give us the equal, equalized student?
I can. I, I would like to do a rather lengthy explanation of what your budget is. Because when I look at the budget, you have, do you have that in front of you? You have, you have removed the on behalf payments to the tech center, z, and a donation for a math teacher. Those are revenues and they will reduce your ed spending, but they don't reduce your budget. Or you, you shouldn't put them in until you actually have your total budget. When I look at your budget, your total budget is actually $7,310,995. Because you can't back those revenues out without impacting your ed spending per equalized pupil. I'll go through this again, but essentially your budget is at $7,310,000. Your ed spending is a combination of taking your total budget and reducing it by any local revenues. So that one piece of local revenue that I can see is the $43,942 that you're receiving as a donation for a math teacher. Andy, did you get the email that I sent with the, um, modified budget that I had done? Could you put that up?
That came in that same email with that piece, Glenn?
I'm sorry? I emailed it at about 11 o'clock this morning. I'm on, uh.
Yeah, let me.
I can.
Yeah, no, I have it. I just gotta.
Okay.
Get it up here. That's this one, right?
Yes. So you can see that at the top, I've added a piece that shows the revenues. So your actual budget is the, the numbers that you see here as your Bellas Falls Union High School total of the $5,643,000. And your assessments, which brings you to the $7,310,000. It is correct, when you look at the top, that $247,000 of that is money that will come from the state. The other piece is that $42,000. It's unclear to me, because I, I just don't know. In '21, your local revenue was 132,000. In '22, it was only 16. It, it is possible that you used fund balance in the past, so. If there are no other sources of revenue that you know of, that's close enough.
Glenn, the revenue, what would the revenue from, um, we have one student from another, um, school district that doesn't have a high school anymore, Black River, who is here now. And I believe the revenue from that is 19, almost 20,000. Where, where would that be shown?
Well, you, you can see over on the left there, I have a tuition question mark. My assumption was that if there was any other revenue, it would likely be some tuition. If you want to put that in there, it's okay. I, I will also tell you that we're looking at a situation where the $20,000 is of, uh, small value in this. Your tax rate is going to go down significantly because the dollar yield has gone up, but we'll get to that a little bit later. What I wanted to do was to agree, or, or hope you would agree, try and convince you that your total budget is actually $7,310,000. Because you shouldn't be taking those revenue pieces out of your expenditures.
And where, where do they get shown?
Well, they'll be at the top here. You can see. Well, they'll be at the top here. You can see the ed spending grant, the first thing at the top is a number that you arrive at by taking your total budget, all of your expenditures and reducing it by any local revenues and the supplemental tech center assistance grant. It, that's how you get to that number. And, and that is, that is the money that the education fund will be sending to you to operate your school.
Excuse me, Glenn. I don't mean to interrupt you, even though I'm interrupting you, but you are aware that the high school sends the two tech centers. Rattleboro, where we have a few kids, which is, um, operated by Rattleboro Union High School. And also River Valley Tech Center in Springfield, where we send roughly fifty kids. However, RVTC is an independent municipality with its own border control and its own taxing authority. So I just want to make sure that that two fifty-four, one thirteen uh, is not a direct revenue to, um, RVTC, which I believe it is.
There is, there is some other place in your budget where you pay the direct payments to all of these centers. This portion is only that portion, which is an on behalf payment from the state.
We make no, Glenn, we make no direct payments to RVTC. It's an independent municipality. Um, it is as much an independent municipality as Rattleboro, you know, actually that's, uh, Wyndham Southeast. Or this high school is. I want to, want to make sure we get that one right.
All right. If, if Andy can scroll up a little bit, you will see in your budget, the actual tuition payments. Uh, here, it's right, whoop, you've gone a little too far. This, this portion of your budget here. Is that the payment you're talking about to the RVTC? The one fifty-one, fifty?
I'm sorry, Glenn. It's not clear to me.
There are, but you can see the, the state contribution and the tech center contributions here, right?
There's no on behalf for the independent tech center municipalities.
Correct. Correct. There's a one fifty-one that goes to RVTC. That's a direct payment. And there's a direct payment to the Wyndham Career Center. And then there are two on behalf payments of the two thirty-one and the twenty-six, one eighty-nine.
Okay, I gotta say this again. One of, one of the, uh, stumbling blocks that the independent tech centers are facing, that's Bennington, Middlebury and, uh, River Valley Tech Center in Springfield, pardon me, not on behalf. I've got my on behalf and my whole harmless mixed up, so I concede the point.
Okay. So there are two port, two parts of that are on behalf and two others are direct payments that you're making. So.
So, go ahead, Glenn.
So anyway, my, my question, my first question is do, can we agree or would you agree that your total budget is the seven million, three hundred and ten thousand?
Not willing to increase it, uh, uh, over what the seven million, twenty-three thousand is. I think we can live with, in that means.
Well, it, it's not going to increase your costs. Let, let me just, you see here at the bottom, at the very bottom, you have taken these, whoop. You've taken out twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars, which is revenue and two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, which is revenue. You reduced your cost from fifty-six hundred to fifty, or fifty-five million, six hundred thousand to five million, three hundred thousand. That's really revenue, but you're going to have to spend the five million, six hundred and forty-three thousand. It's, it's part of your expenditures. This is just taking the budgets that you have and adding them together, your total budget and your assessment budget. And then the revenues will come out at the top. This will all come back to the same place. I'm sorry that this is a little bit difficult, but if you don't have the total budget and your total ed spending, if you take those numbers out first, you won't raise enough in taxes. Oh, yeah. It's not, it will not change your, it won't change the end product. It, it will simply show revenues as one part of your budget and expenditures as another. You are going to.
What we're assessing out for, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you tell us what we're assessing out for, please, Glenn?
Um. Andy, can you show them what you had started with the, uh, three prior year comparison? So if you start at the top with your budget of three million or seven million, three hundred thousand, you take away your local revenues down there at the forty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. That means your education spending is seven million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars divided by those three hundred and eighty-three point nine five equalized pupils. So your ed spending is down to eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. There is no threshold down on line twenty-three. There's no longer any penalty should you go over that, although you did not. So you'll be looking at a tax rate based on eighteen thousand, nine twenty-nine. The union spending adjustment is a hundred and forty-six point three two-two percent because the dollar yield has gone up to twelve thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Your homestead tax rate is down from one seventy-five to one dollar and forty-six cents.
Does that make sense to everyone?
I know.
It does me, but just wanted to make sure everybody else did.
No, because when I'm looking at the bottom of that thing I'm looking at, where it was changed to seven million, zero, zero, nine. So at the, on the other page, when we were looking at the budget page.
Yes.
And he had the figures over on the right. So why aren't, why aren't we going with the seven million, nine thousand? If we're doing this, I don't understand why we're increasing it.
The, the difference between those two numbers are the two pieces of revenue that you have already used to reduce what you're considering your expenditures. And if, if you.
But we wouldn't have that other half teacher. We, we increased other half teacher in financial literacy. Um, because of that payment that was going to go to increase that. So if we wouldn't increase that, without that, I don't understand why we put it in because it's actually not part of what would be budgeted.
If, if it shows as an expenditure and it also has an offsetting revenue, it is net to your budget. But your budget is the, the theory at the, actually statutorily, the requirement in budgeting is to show all of your anticipated expenditures and all of your anticipated revenues. If you, you can show it the way it's shown that says that your budget is actually only seven million and nine dollars, but it doesn't represent the actual expenditures that you will be making. And we would have to be careful that you're getting, you're doing your ed spending amount correctly so that you can raise the appropriate amount of taxes. If we started at the seven million, just over seven million dollars, uh, if, could we go back to the top of this? Instead of starting at seven million, three, you start at just over seven million. Your ed spending per equalized pupil would be lower. Your tax rate would be lower, but you would not raise enough money to pay for what you've said you want to spend. Because the bulk of your revenue comes from the ed fund, from your tax, your tax rate. It's not, in the case of the teacher, uh, you can take that out. It's fine. It, it, it is immaterial. If you're going to get revenue, my only point is that and the statute requires that you show all of your intended revenues and all of your intended expenditures. When you do that and not net them, you, you've netted two pieces in the original budget. And it will lower your budget. It will lower the amount of tax revenue you receive. But you're going to have to pay seven million, three hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of expenditures, more or less.
However, here's my argument. However, if I've got that money coming in from the other source, you're, why am I assessing the taxpayers for seven million, three hundred and ten thousand? Because that's going to be surplus above what I need to, to spend next year. Because I, that is offset by the other. It's just like any grant funded position is offset by others. So if I raise all of that money from the taxpayers, I'm making them pay far more than what they need to pay to support the education that I'm delivering to the students.
Those, that local revenue is reduced. In this worksheet, we start with the seven million, three hundred and ten thousand and we take out the local revenues and you're actually, the ed spending is seven million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. One of the, the other piece that you may find of some interest is the on behalf payment that they talk about. You have to actually raise in taxes. It's part of your ed spending. You can see that it's not deducted here because it's not deducted. The state raises that money from your taxpayers and sends it directly to the tech center on your behalf. But it's not, it's not money that you're going to get if you don't have this set up appropriately.
I don't need that money because that's been a donation that's already been given.
You don't get that money. You raise it in taxes.
Why? Why am I raising more taxes than I need?
You need, no, let, let me try again.
I don't need that because we're getting that money handed to us. It's been handed to us.
No, that money comes, that money does not come to you.
It comes from an outside fund to the school that is not have to be raised in taxes.
Actually, it is raised on you, from your taxpayers and it is sent directly to the tech center. It never comes through your budget.
No, I'm talking about the money for that teacher that you're in, increasing this. That extra, that extra money there.
The money for the teacher that's in there is in the budget of seven million, three hundred thousand. It is then deducted and you don't raise taxes to pay that money. It shows here as a deduction.
If I put it in that article, I'm raising it.
No.
I'm charging it to the taxpayers. Yes, I am. If it's in that article, it's raised in taxes.
No, what you raise in taxes is your budgeted expenditures less any revenues that you have. So that revenue is here. It reduces the amount of taxes that you have to raise.
So, so Glenn, on, on the article, on the article here where we're talking, where it says seven million, twenty-three thousand, it would say then, of course, I gotta find it again. It would say, what you're saying is it would say seven million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, fifty-three dollars.
That's your ed spending, yes.
So it wouldn't say seven million, three hundred, ninety-five dollars because you've already taken out the forty-two thousand for the, um, the piece. And so if I'm understanding you correctly, is if, uh, if there had been an earlier past article that said that they were going to carry over a hundred thousand dollars two years ago, that would show right here on the, on line two. So it would au- automatically reduce this bottom line here that we're act, ass, actually trying to raise taxes on.
Right. If you look back in twenty and twenty-one, i- if part of that revenue was fund balance used as a revenue, it reduces what you're asking the taxpayers to raise. All of any local revenue would show up in that line nine. And it reduces the amount of ed spending, which is what you have to raise taxes on. You don't raise taxes on your budget. You raise taxes on your ed spending.
So your number eleven, item, or line eleven is what would be reflective here in what you're asking in article five.
No.
No?
No, article five would be the seven million, three ten.
And that's what I'm objecting to because then we're raising all that money. You just told me I didn't need that money and now you're telling me I'm going to tell the taxpayers they have to pay that.
The taxpayers are not raising seven million, three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
That's what article five says they're doing. That's exactly what they're doing. That's exactly the amount that the treasurer at the town office puts in there and re, and asks taxpayer to pay.
No, the amount of ed spending is seven million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. If, if you use the numbers that you had, the two hundred and whatever that needs to go to the tech centers and on behalf money will be raised in taxes. It will go to the tech center and you will be that amount short in terms of the revenue that you have raised.
So even, even though Glenn, I, I think I'm, I'm very much understanding this now. We have to show it in the budget because we, we have to show every cost, uh, that is to, to our school. Even though we're getting the two hundred and thirty-one and the twenty-six back or we're not getting it back. It's kind of just a pass through to pay for that. We still have to show it. Therefore, it reflects in our top line budget figure, if you like. So.
It is. It's part of your expenditures and, and my concern, the, the reason that it should show is that if you, it's going to be raised.
Yeah.
Because the on behalf payment is calculated by the state. It says you have this many uh tech ed students, there's a formula. You're going to owe, you're going to raise taxes in your communities of that two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And it's going to go to the tech centers.
Mm-hmm.
But if you don't show it as an expenditure, you'll be short two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in tax revenue that comes to your school district. This is not increasing your total expenditures. If you go down through your expenditure budget, they're all there. Then some pieces of revenue were added in to suggest that your budget is actually smaller. It is smaller in the sense that you don't need to raise taxes on that, but it is your budget, your expenditures, including everything in and done, is going to be a little over seven mil, seven million three hundred thousand dollars. That's your budget. You're gonna get some revenue. One of the real difficulties here is the notion that the tech center is an on behalf payment that comes from somewhere else, it comes from your taxpayers. It goes directly to the tech centers on your behalf, but you raise it in your communities. It's part of your ed spending.
And that, um, the twenty, the twenty thousand for um, that other, the student that we have, that can't be shown as revenue to.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, I was unaware of the tuition revenue, I assume there's at least that much, but yes.
Well, we've already billed for night, the halfway stage, I believe in November, it was billed and paid. Uh but again, I, I'm not totally sure because uh that goes.
Yes, if you, if you anticipate receiving any tuition revenue next year, it becomes part of your local revenue and it reduces the amount that your taxpayers have to raise.
Right. Because the student, the student's here this year as an eleventh grader and plans on returning next year, so again, that's why I would count it because they're.
Sure.
Part of her high school, you know, graduation plan.
We can go back to the budget sheet and add twenty thousand dollars. It then, it will show on line nine of this as an additional twenty. And it will reduce your ask to the taxpayers to seven million two forty-eight.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
Hello.
Yeah, go ahead, Molly.
So we've lost our quorum. Gonna have to revisit this because we've lost our quorum to vote on these articles. Um, I, I totally appreciate what Glenn has done here today because I think he's helped us understand some things. But I think that um, a few of us are, are working and, and they've had to leave because they've had other meetings, so um. Uh I think we need to, we, we're gonna have to revisit this, it's the eighteenth, we gotta have it by the twentieth. Um, I have a suggestion, if it's, if anyone wants to listen to it. Um, I've listened to everything, I think Priscilla's probably, you know, that number's already gotten out to, to people, so, and she's nervous to make that number go up anymore. I understand what you've done, Glenn. Um, we have this eight hundred and ninety-two thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars that is coming back in and either going to come off the bottom line or put some into a reserve fund. And hopefully, um, people can think about how that ought to happen. John has made a suggestion of putting a hundred thousand dollars back to reduce taxes. I, I don't think that's enough at this point, I, I think people are gonna wonder what we're doing when they see that kind of surplus. If we put three hundred and fifty thousand back into the budget to reduce taxes, that would get your number under six million. If we use the number that Glenn has given us, that would, uh, get us under seven million. And it would put five hundred and forty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars into the reserve fund. Um, I'm throwing that out there because I think we need to say something, we need to talk about this. I'm looking for a little guidance because we have just lost our quorum, so do we have to table this meeting and reschedule it so that we can get this taken care of?
No, we can't vote on it, we can't vote on it, Molly, but we can continue the discussion and get to a point where we're at least understanding better. I'm, I'm very nervous about increasing that at all, anything that's typed out there because like we said, Friday night, we were at the um, seven million twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. Um, they also, and we're looking at the River Valley Tech Center, they have a motion a- and an amount um, uh, in an article that's in our taxes to be voted on um, at town meeting. And we vote that amount as their budget separate. And so we're also being, that's, that's also being taken from there and applied. So that's why I'm not understanding why we've got it both places. To me, it's double, doubling it, we're taxing it both places. Um, I understand Glenn's saying we have to have it in there, but I don't understand why we would have it in two places. So it's very confusing for me on these issues. Thanks for listening.
So that normally is not part of your budget?
I thought it was, Glenn, but now that we're questioning it, I don't know without going back and looking.
No, it's, it's been in before, it's been in, it just, it was hard to understand. You know, why, why you put it in if it's paid, you know, almost straight to the, the tech centers. But I understand that now, it's, it's put in, but we also get the revenue for it, so it supports it, so.
So Andy, I've gotta step out, I've um. Let me know, you know, what we've gotta do to reschedule. Can we reschedule it for another, I'm in the middle of the day, or do you wanna meet at night? I'll do whatever we gotta do, but.
Um, Molly, can I interrupt? We have not adjourned this meeting. Since it's not an adjourned meeting, we can recess it and we can meet anytime that you, you want without, without having the warranted twenty-four hour notice for a special meeting. Um, it's always better to have a, you know, a special one, but if we haven't adjourned this, we can continue it. We could meet again, you know, tomorrow at a time that you set if you want to. As long as we know to tell that before we adjourn.
Andy, what's your schedule look like?
Uh, well, I, well, we have a, tomorrow, we have a, I mean, I can clear whatever I need to clear, so, I mean, um, if we're talking in the middle of the day, we have a Rockingham, uh, we have on hold right now uh, Rockingham Special Board just in case, um, that's tomorrow night. Um, we have nothing Thursday night, uh, if we're looking during the day, I can clear time during the day tomorrow, um, same thing with Thursday, so.
All right, tell me what time in the, during the day tomorrow. Yeah, I think it's hard for some of them because, you know, everybody's, you got half a dozen people that are working, that's all. Um. You wanted, did you say there was time tomorrow night?
Well, so we have reserved um, a, a Rockingham Special Board meeting um, in case we needed to for um, if we didn't get done tonight. So, I mean.
Okay, so Priscilla will have to get done.
I mean, we can do it at six-thirty, we can do it.
We're not gonna get done tonight, so we may not have a quorum tonight.
Thursday night, Andy?
But we have to have this done by the twentieth.
That's, the, the Thursday is the twentieth, so, does it have to be done on the twentieth or before the twentieth?
No, we have to have the warnings to uh, the town office probably by the twentieth. I mean, I'm sure if we.
They need to be.
Because, because they're not open Friday.
We'd have to do it during the day on the twentieth.
Okay. You tell me. Later afternoon, maybe if people are more available.
Um.
What's your schedule, two o'clock, three o'clock?
What time's the town close?
Four-thirty.
So.
Uh, plan on four.
So I guess.
And you gotta have it typed.
Yeah, I mean, two o'clock, two-thirty.
Let's do it earlier.
Uh, one, one o'clock?
You wanna try a noon time one again?
We can try noon, yeah.
Try noon Thursday. Let's recess this meeting until twelve o'clock, January twentieth.